All right. Call this meeting to order. Thank you for your patience while we figured out our situation. We are not live streaming, but we are recording the minutes and we will post these to the website when she gets them done. So it is now seven, almost six fifty-eight. Call this meeting to order for December 5th, 2024. We are the Planning Commission. Thank you for everyone and your patience. We are all here with the exception of Francis, our chairman. He is absent today, and Jeremy Scott as well. And if you could just make sure your phones are silenced, that would be great so we don't have any interruptions. Meeting minutes. We do have the Commission to consider the meeting minutes from November 7th, 2024. Does anyone have any comments or changes? They were part of our pre-read packet. Hearing none. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the minutes from November 7th, 2024.
Any seconds?
Second.
Thank you. All right. Please raise your hand if you are in favor, and I will announce the vote. Three. Three, four. Okay. Is there any abstentions? Two abstentions. Three in favor, two abstentions. All right. So we do have a public hearing procedure that is going to be read to us, so if you guys could just pay attention. It's a little bit new, and we're all still getting used to it. We'll do our best to follow it.
Okay. Any individual requesting to be heard on a matter related to the purpose of this hearing must be recognized by the Chair before addressing the Board or Commission. And when you come to speak, you must identify yourself and furnish a home address before proceeding with any comments or remarks. The Commission will allow the proponents a total of 10 minutes to speak in support of an application. Opponents then will be allowed 10 minutes to speak in opposition. Comments are accepted first from the applicant, followed by persons speaking in favor, and then from those in opposition. Upon conclusion of comments, the Chair can allow additional time if needed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we do have a robust agenda for this evening, but we do have two items that were deferred. So if you are here to hear the PH-24-20 Mayfair on Haynes Bridge, that one has been deferred. It will not be considered tonight. And the other one is V-24-14, the Wells Fargo redevelopment on 21 North Main Street. Both those items have been deferred and will be heard at a future meeting. So apologize if you've been waiting for those. Our next item on the agenda, and I will say before I go any further, all the items on the docket tonight will be considered by City Council on Monday, December 16th. So we're just the recommending body. They will go forward to City Council for a decision on Monday, December 16th. So our next item on business is PH-24-25/ Z-24-18 Wexler, 172 and 182 Marietta Street. And I believe, Michael?
Thank you, Chairwoman and Commissioners. The first item before you is a request for changes to conditions, previous conditions of zoning, as well as rezoning, to allow for the construction of a detached garage with accessory dwelling unit on .58 acres in the downtown. The applicant is constructing a single-family home at 182 Marietta Street and intends to combine the property with 172 Marietta Street. A change of condition of zoning is requested at 182 Marietta Street, and a rezoning is requested from C2 General Commercial to DTR Downtown Residential at 172 Marietta Street. And I do, the location map is on the overhead. These properties are 172 and 182 Marietta Street. Properties are developed with single-family detached homes converted to commercial uses. And the comprehensive land use plan designation of the property is mixed-use, which supports the proposed rezoning. In order to allow the two lots to be used as one, the applicant is requesting a change to zoning conditions that were placed on the property at 182 Marietta Street back in 2022. And that has to deal with condition number six, which required a 10-foot planted buffer along the east, south, and west sides of the property. Since 172 Marietta Street is on the east side of 182, that buffer, that 10-foot planted buffer would need to be stricken from that previous condition. Do have the applicant's, the site plan would be for 172, it would be this one, Kathy? Yeah. So the site plan for at 172, this is where the detached garage with accessory dwelling unit above. So there's an existing home on the property. The large rectangle represents the detached garage, the position of the new detached garage on the property. It is a three-car garage. It is a side-loaded garage, so the garage doors are not facing Marietta Street. They're actually facing the applicant's new home at 182 Marietta Street. And then on the second floor of that detached garage would be an accessory dwelling unit. The driveway at 182 Marietta Street where the new home is being built would connect over to the detached garage on 172. So 172 wouldn't have an additional driveway. There would just be one driveway for both properties. There are very few trees at 172 Marietta Street. We had the city arborist go out to the property, and he did recommend that a boundary tree between the two properties be saved. That's tree number six on the tree survey, and it is a good-conditioned 14-inch water oak. We have the building elevations. And so the building elevations are in the neoclassical style. The applicant previously got their primary home approved at 182, and we have an elevation, we'll go back to those. So this elevation here shows the home on the right-hand side with the detached garage on the left. And this has been reviewed by the downtown consultant, believes that it complements the style of the home being constructed at 182. Of course, looking at the review criteria for rezoning, the request is consistent with the future land use designation of the property. The proposal should not have adverse effect to the natural environment, and would not cause excessive burden on public facilities and services. It's just a detached garage with one accessory dwelling unit. And then if this request is approved, the applicant intends to combine the two lots together as one lot. The applicant did provide a citizen participation report indicating that they had received positive feedback, and they also obtained four letters of support, which are part of your packet. This item was shown to the public at the November 13th Community Zoning Information Meeting. There were two public comments in support of the applicant's request. With that, staff is recommending approval, subject to nine conditions, as well as changing a condition related to the rezoning at 182 Marietta Street. And I'll briefly go through those conditions. Condition one is the site plan-specific condition, rezoning the property to DTR. Condition two is the building elevation rendering condition. Three is requiring landscape strip along Marietta Street. Four, decorative low-wall metal fencing or hedge with column shall frame the front yard. Five, a 10-foot planted buffer shall be provided along the east and south property lines. That's that east 10-foot planted buffer that comes off of 182 and moves to the east side of 172. Six, property owner shall improve Marietta streetscape. Seven, tree number six, the 14-inch water oak, shall be saved. Eight, fences and walls visible from the public right-of-way shall be decorative as approved by staff. Unfinished wood fences and decks shall not be visible from the street. Condition nine, if 172 and 182 Marietta Street are combined, access shall be consolidated to a single access point or driveway for both lots. And then the additional change to a condition, this is related to file Z-22-01/V-22-03 Wexler, 182 Marietta Street. And that is condition six. Within those conditions, removing "east" from that sentence. So that condition has to do with a 10-foot planted buffer. It removes that requirement along the east property line there. And that concludes the presentation. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Thank you, Michael. Appreciate that. So just to clarify, and I'll open it up to other questions. So that last comment you made that is not in this document, that's relating to the previous applicant's file, not?
Yes. So there's nine new conditions that are being recommended associated with 172 Marietta Street. And then there is a change to a previous condition of zoning related to 182 Marietta Street. That is condition number six from the 2022 rezoning of that property.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I'll open it up to the Commission to see if they have any other questions for Michael. Go ahead.
Michael, is this going to still, once the dwelling is completed, which is very nice, are we going to consider this as two separate lots from a tax standpoint?
So it's the, and the applicant is here, but it's my understanding that the applicant intends to combine the properties. That's why they were wanting to rezone it, so that they didn't have a split zoning situation. Because right now-
Or in the future.
Correct. Yeah. So it's my understanding that they do want to combine them and consolidate them into one lot.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? All right. Hearing none. I'd like to welcome the applicant to come forward. And again, please state your name and your address for the record.
Andrew Wexler, Courtney Wexler, 12051 Orchid Lane, Alpharetta, Georgia, 30009. All right. So yeah, we're just here to get the lot, we were able to acquire the lot next door to our, where we're building. We feel like it's going to be a great opportunity for us to put a garage there and a living space up top. The, we think it's actually going to add more green space. I think previously, as it was zone commercial, and maybe the previous owners' plans were to office space, and I think the neighborhood really is starting to move towards more residential look and feel for the downtown residential, so we're able to walk near to the restaurants. And so we just wanted to expand our lot so that we could have more green space and make sure that we can improve it in a positive way.
All right. Hearing nothing else? Thank you very much. Oh, do you guys have any questions?
I have a comment.
Yes.
Hey, I'm, I really can't believe it was 2022 when you were here. I mean, I was like, wow, time goes by really quickly. So I drove out there today, and I actually saw that they had broken ground and started your beautiful home. So it's exciting to see it kind of start taking place, and so we're excited to have you, have you there.
Thank you. We're as excited as you are.
I know.
It's been a long road.
I know it has, but we're excited you're going to be in Alpharetta.
So we're very grateful, yes. Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments from the Commissioners? All right. Hearing none. We'll give you guys a chance for rebuttal if needed after public comment. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We'll open this item up for public comment. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of this applicant or proposal? Hearing none. Any opposition? All right. I'll close public comment. Did you want to add anything else in rebuttal?
We're good.
Good. I'll turn it over to the Commissioners. Does anyone else have any comments or questions? What is the will?
I would, I'll recommend approval-
Okay.
-for PH-24-23-Z-24, oh no, yeah, -18 Wexler/172 and 182 Marietta Street, with number six being eliminated, and adding the change of conditions of zoning related to Z-22-01/V-22-03 Wexler/182 Marietta Street, per Michael.
You want to clarify that, Michael, just so we get it right in the record?
So condition six related to the 2022 rezoning of 182, that needs to stay in as it's written in the staff report. So what we've done is we just removed the word "east" from that condition.
So in condition six, remove the word "east"?
Yes. And it is removed in the staff report.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you want us, is your, in the minutes, should it be referencing the previous application in '22?
I think it would just be a recommendation of approval for this application that's before you, with those conditions as written in the staff report.
Okay.
Agreed.
Excellent. Thank you, DC. All right. Any other questions or comments? I'll call the motion, and if you could please keep your hands raised so I can count. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That'd be five. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Good luck. City Council will hear it on December 16th. All right. Next up, moving right along, we have Z-24-15 McManus/350 Brady Place. And I have, Michael, you are also doing this one? Thank you.
Thank you, Chairwoman and Commissioners. The next request before you is a request for rezoning, to allow an existing structure to be used for a single-family residence and an office in the future on 0.31 acres in the downtown. The structure was most recently occupied by Blooming Bouquets Florist, and the property owner would like to convert the structure to her primary residence. A rezoning is requested from ONI Office Institutional to DTMU Downtown Mixed Juice. And we do have the, the location is at 350 Brady Place. Property is developed with a one-story structure. It's about 1,000 square feet. And the comprehensive land use plan designation of the property is mixed-use, which supports the requested zoning. Property is also located in the downtown, as well as the South Main Street LCI Livable Centers Initiative. And Brady Place was designated in that plan as a cottage commercial district. And the vision for that area is to build on the existing market condition by adding compatible infill structures and saving existing structures to assemble, to resemble detached homes. So what you see along South Main Street and Brady Place in that particular pocket are old residential homes that have been, over the years, some of them have been converted to commercial uses. Some have remained residential along Brady Place. And so the vision for that area is to build upon that, so smaller-type structures with a mix of residential and commercial. The applicant did provide a site plan. Basically, it's a survey of the property. She's not really proposing much in the way of new development on the property, just wanting to convert the existing structure into a residence. She did indicate in her application that there would be some interior renovations of the structure. She envisioned a new metal roof, painting of the exterior, and a complete landscape redesign of the property. She does intend to remove the existing parking lot at the location. And then it was recommended as well by our traffic engineer, and the property owner has experienced some issues with kind of cut-through traffic through the parking lot, so it was recommended that the curb cut be removed off of Maxwell Road. And there's no tree removal being proposed by the applicant. Looking at the review criteria for rezoning, we found the request is consistent with the future land use designation of the property. Also, the South Main Street LCI designating this area as cottage commercial district, the applicant's desire to save this, and save and reuse the existing structure is consistent with the vision for that particular area. We do not believe the request would adversely affect the natural environment or cause an excessive burden on public services or facilities. The applicant did provide a citizen participation plan, indicated that they had received one email in support. Also showed this request to the public at the November 13th Community Zoning Information Meeting, and there were no public comments provided. With that, staff is recommending approval of the applicant's request, subject to six conditions. I'll go through those. Condition one is a site plan-specific condition, rezoning the property to DTMU, limits the uses to one dwelling-for-sale detached residential unit or office. Condition two, exterior changes to the structure shall require final approval by DRB. Three, existing parking lot and curb-cut driveway on Maxwell Road shall be removed, except to provide a driveway from Brady Place and parking for the residents. If the structure is converted to an office, at least three and no more than four parking spaces shall be provided on the property, including the required parking lot landscape screening from public streets. Condition four, landscape strip shall be provided along Brady Place and Maxwell Road with existing healthy trees saved where possible as approved by staff. Condition five, and I am recommending additional language on condition five. So condition five in your report reads, residential accessory structures shall be located to the side or rear of the primary structure and screened from the public street behind a fence. I'm recommending to remove the period at the end of that sentence and add a comma, and that should go on to say, except that a detached garage may be placed in the front yard to either side of the existing structure with a garage door facing away from the street. And I'll go ahead and read that one one more time, because I know that was a little lengthy. And I will explain what, the reason for this clarification. Again, condition five would read, residential accessory structure shall be located to the side or rear of the primary structure and screened from the public street behind a fence, comma, except that a detached garage may be placed in the front yard to either side of the existing structure with a garage door facing away from the street. And then the final condition, condition six, reads, fences and walls visible from the public right-of-way shall be decorative as approved by staff. Unfinished wood fences and decks shall not be visible from the street. And just let me step back real quick on condition five. I just wanted to point out to you that the reason why we, the idea would be for any detached garage to be added here, that it would need to be on either side of the structure. There really is not sufficient room to place the detached garage here. It's a lot closer, there's not a lot of room here. It's a lot closer than what you can see on this site plan. So the idea would be that maybe she would construct a detached garage to the side, either side of the structure, probably over here, with the garage doors facing this way. So you would have a structure in this general area here with the garage doors turned to If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Thank you, Michael. I'll open it up to the Commission to ask any questions, Michael, about the applicant and the staff conditions, please.
I missed shorthand. Can you, can you go back to the last, you know, the additional sentence after exist, said in the front yard of the existing-
Existing structure.
Okay. And now, just slowly.
With a garage door facing away from the street.
Thank you.
Yep.
Michael, I do have one quick question. Sorry, are you done?
No, I'm finished.
One quick question. So you had mentioned, and the trees, you had someone look at it. Is there any concern that this potential structure could, we'll just deal with the tree, that one tree that's off there, could be impacted? So we wouldn't know that until a design had been put forward? So that would be dealt with at staff level? Yeah, that's the one.
Yeah. I don't, I don't know that that, I don't know the status of that tree. I can try to look at that real quick. It doesn't look very healthy from the picture. I don't even know if the structure would even-
Okay.
... impact that. But staff definitely could look at that.
As long as you guys do take a look at it. That's what I wanted to confirm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I forgot that I had kind of drawn this up. So remember, this curb cut here on Maxwell Road, that will get shut off, and then the applicant wants to remove the parking lot and landscape this area into a nice residential landscape. So the idea would be you put a structure possibly here. The intent is not to put it necessarily between the structure and the road, but they are very limited based on the triangle of shape of this property and the existing position of the home. But we did want to make sure that it was to either side of the structure, so that the main structure still was present.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. All right. Would the applicant like to come forward? And please don't forget to state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
I'm Christina McManus, and I presently live at 6606 Webb Bridge Court, Alpharetta, So just a little bit about the property. My husband and I started a business in Alpharetta in 2000. And in 2002, we were looking for some sort of charming, small office situation, and we saw that that was available, and we quickly snapped it up, because we just felt like Alpharetta was, was merging into this beautiful, walkable downtown. We just knew, we could feel it. It was coming. And so we were there for 10 years, and then went on to other adventures and rented the property out since then, knowing that we would eventually come back and hopefully renovate the property, because we were so excited about being in a walkable, bicyctable situation where you really never need to get in your car if you don't really want to. So that's why I'm super excited about being a part of the South Main Street Livable Centers Initiative, because when we read about that, we were just like, oh my gosh, they get it. You know, they get what we were hoping for, that property. And for Brady Place to, in this initiative, it talks about the cobblestone street and making it more of a drivable and walkable street. And I just think that is, just could be so complimentary to the wonderful things that you've already done to the downtown area. You know, it says the reason for the study was to develop a vision to encourage reinvestment within that area. And so that's exactly what I want to do. And hopefully, what I'm thinking is, if I do it, then it'll be a catalyst for everybody else in that area. So thank you for considering the rezoning. I think it can only be a positive, and I think it's what you all envisioned for that area anyway. So I'm excited to be a start of that area.
Do you have more comments?
You're welcome.
Any questions? More comments?
No, just a comment. I drove over there today. It is a charming house. I'm so glad you're going to redo it and keep it, and I think we need to hire you to help us advertise for Alpharetta. You did such a good job.
I love Alpharetta.
But yes, I'm, we're excited that you're keeping the home.
Thank you.
And, yeah, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Chair, we'll give you a chance for rebuttal if there's any public comments.
Okay. All right.
I will open this up for public- I will open this up for public comment. Is anyone here speaking in favor of this applicant? Any opposition? All right, moving right along. Any rebuttal? You get a chance? No, you're good. So, I'll open it up to the commissioners to see if anyone has any further comments or questions.
Go, Wayne.
You took the notes.
If I get it right.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve Z-24-15 McManus, 350 Brady Place, with the additions as noted by staff, also with the exception to number, what is that one?
Five.
Number five, thank you, that would read, as written however, after behind a fence comment, except that a detached garage may be placed in the front yard of the existing structure with a garage door facing away from the street, if I had that correct. Mr. Michael?
[inaudible]
Thank you. Thank you, as noted by Michael.
I'll second.
We had a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. Please raise your right hand if you're in favor. Hold them up. Five. Thank you. All right, so that will be held, City Council, December 16th. Show up again. You're welcome, thank you. Show up again. It's always good to show up. All right, moving on. Next item on our agenda is Z-24-16/V-24-25 Hampton Hall/Southvine Homes. I believe, Michael, once again.
The next request is from Southvine Homes. It's a request for rezoning in variances to allow nine single-family detached homes on 5.05 acres. The proposed density is 1.78 dwelling units per acre. Rezoning is requested from AG Agriculture to R15 dwelling for sale residential. Invariances are requested to reduce lot width and reduce building setbacks. Have the location map on the overhead. This property is located at Zero Blake Road in the Hampton Hall subdivision. The comprehensive land use plan designation of the property is low-density residential, which supports the proposed rezoning to R15. Surrounding area is predominantly zoned CUP, with minimum lot sizes ranging between 12,000 to 16,000 square feet, and minimum lot widths ranging between 80 to 94 feet. Surrounding subdivisions were developed and/or approved in unincorporated Fulton County. So, the last two phases in Hampton Hall were also rezoned to R15. So, Hampton Hall, the primary zoning there is primarily CUP, which is Community Unit Plan. That's because those properties were developed and approved in Fulton County and did not match within a specific zoning district, so it was given the CUP designation. The more recent phases in Hampton Hall, Phase Six, Seven, and this would be Phase Eight, have rezoned to R15. As I mentioned, the applicant has some variance requests. Lot width, reducing the lot width from 100 to 80 feet, reducing the front setback from 35 to 30 feet, and reducing the side setback from 10 to 5 feet, but 5 feet with 20 feet between foundations or walls. There's also, with that, the applicant isn't proposing to increase the rear setback. That does not require variance, but they were offering that in order to provide a larger buffer along the east, west, and south sides of the property. And I do have an exhibit, this colored exhibit here, that shows that. So, the green are the east and west sides of the development, the orange on the south. So, those are, the applicant is, has increased the rear building setbacks from 25 to 40 feet, and they're providing a 40-foot buffer on the east, west, and south sides of the property.
Michael?
Michael, sorry to interrupt your presentation. You will hear an audio pop sometime during the presentation, as audio is being rebooted.
Okay.
So, please carry on and proceed as you hear the pop. I just wanted you to note, be notified about that. Thank you.
Kathy, would you put the site plan on? The site plan depicts the nine single-family detached lots oriented to a new Coltsac Street off of High Hampton Chase in the Hampton Hall subdivision. The lots, the nine lots range in size from just over 15,000 square feet to 26,272 square feet, with an average lot size of 18,375 square feet. So, that more than exceeds the minimum 15,000 square feet required in the zoning. Property consists of hardwoods. A tree survey and assessment identifies six specimen trees on the property, and the site plan depicts 19 tree saves, including three specimen trees and several trees of quality. There's a stormwater pond in the southeast, southwest corner of the property. It's on a .7-acre property. There are walls on two sides of the pond due to the topography in the area. And the site plan does depict the stormwater pond discharging through a pipe to a nearby stream at the southeast corner of the property. The applicant did provide some renderings, and the applicant still is working with the Hampton Hall HOA on these renderings. So, the applicant's intent was to match the look of the existing homes in Hampton Hall. The HOA has looked at those renderings and just once asked, asked the applicant to update the look of some of those renderings. So, they did provide six different home elevations depicting two-story homes with a traditional style, primarily brick and stone exteriors. Did discuss the renderings with a representative of Hampton Hall HOA, and Hampton Hall HOA requested that we did not reference the specific renderings that had been submitted, and that we just refer to the homes being of a style massing in size similar to the existing homes in Hampton Hall. Of course, looking at the review criteria for rezoning and variance, we found that the zoning proposal is suitable as it relates to the use and development of adjacent and nearby properties. The adjacent properties are similarly developed. Future land use designation of the property supports the requested rezoning. The area schools have available capacity to serve students generated by the proposal, and there are recreational facilities available within a quarter mile of the subject property. As it relates to the variances, the property does have extraordinary and exceptional conditions due to its topography. The minimum lot width and building setbacks are consistent with the development regulations in Hampton Hall and in surrounding subdivisions. And again, that's due to most of those properties being approved or developed under unincorporated Fulton County. And then, as I noted earlier, the applicant did propose an increase to that rear setback in order to provide that perimeter 40-foot landscape buffer to the west, south, and east buffer impacts to surrounding properties. The applicant also provided a citizen participation report, indicating that they maintained regular, they have been, maintained regular contact with Hampton Hall HOA. I believe we've been, staff has been discussing this proposal on this property probably for a good two or possibly three years with the applicant. So, they've remained in regular contact with the HOA, and the HOA has approved the annexation of this development into the Hampton Hall HOA. This request was also shown to the public at the November 13th Community Zoning Information Meeting. There were residents that signed in with comments regarding stormwater and a desire for no open cuts in the street for a sewer tie-in. And with that, staff is recommending approval of the applicant's request, subject to 21 conditions. Condition one is a site plan specific condition, rezoning the property to R15. Condition two is the, the architecture and material condition. I'll go ahead and read that one. Homes shall be similar in size, massing, and style to Hampton Hall homes, and limited to two stories above grade with plans approved by staff. Homes shall be no less than 3,000 square feet of heated space, nor more than 5,000 square feet of heated space. Condition three would be the approval of the variance, so the minimum lot width and building setbacks as depicted on the site plan. Condition four ties them to Exhibit A, which is the buffer plan with the orange and green buffers highlighted around the perimeter of the west, east, and south property lines, requiring that buffer be replanted prior to the first CO on the property. Condition five, minimum 10-foot landscape strip shall be required along High Hampton Chase, and planted with evergreen screening material. Six requires the new Coltsac Street to comply with the city's standard details for a local street in Coltsac. Seven is, in lieu of the typical 10-foot landscape strip that would be required along the new street, the arborist did recommend an alternative planting to be consistent with the landscape strips that are existing in Hampton Hall. Eight, tree shall be saved as depicted on the site plan prepared by Foresight Group, revised 9/20/24. Nine, a non-access easement shall be recorded on the final plat along High Hampton Chase and behind lots three and four adjacent to Carverton Lane, that's to the east. Condition 10, developer shall not open cut public streets to extend an off-site sanitary sewer connection. Condition 11, developer shall install decorative pedestrian lights along the new street in High Hampton Chase. Twelve, unfinished wood decks, fences, or porches shall not be visible from High Hampton Chase or the new street. Thirteen, for the benefit of emergency services, this development shall not be given a separate name, but shall be developed and platted as an additional Hampton Hall Phase, Phase Condition 14 deals with construction vehicles during construction at this property. Condition 15 requires a downstream analysis of the pipe system to be determined, or during, that would be during the land assurants permit process. Condition 16, any installation of off-site pipes shall require approval and easements from private property owners prior to issuance of land assurants permit. Seventeen, a 20-foot drainage easement shall be required on all storm pipes outside of the right of way. Eighteen, all impervious improvements shall drain to the stormwater management facilities for quality and quantity treatment. This shall require the use of berm, swells, pipes, or alternative means approved by staff to direct water to facilities. Nineteen, stormwater structures or walls visible from adjacent properties shall be faced with decorative stone or brick, and shall be maintained by the established HOA, as approved by staff. Twenty, per private agreement, the developer shall complete the annexation process with the Hampton Hall HOA. And 21, no more than 10% of the residential unit shall be permitted to be rented, as recorded in the HOA's declarations and covenants. And one last thing that I would, wanted to say is, many of these conditions are very similar, the conditions that were placed on Phases Six and Seven within Hampton Hall. And those were at the request of the HOA, as well as surrounding affected neighbors. And that concludes the presentation. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Thank you, Michael. I'll turn it over to the commissioners. Does anyone have any questions?
I've just got one, Michael. Just to confirm, the staff is supportive of the markups to the conditions that we received from the applicant? Is that correct?
Thank you, Commissioner Stratton. I did forgot to, I forgot to mention that. Yes, so the applicant did submit some changes to the conditions of zoning. Those were emailed to you. Staff has reviewed those changes, and in fact, worked with the applicant on some of those changes, and we are in agreement with all of the requested changes by the applicant.
Thank you.
Michael, what did you say the setback from the road is?
The setback from High Hampton Chase.
Average house, average house setback.
You mean from the road, new road?
Right.
From the new road?
Yeah, these houses are going to be, how far from the street?
They're asking for a 30-foot setback. 35 is what would be required in R15. They're just asking to reduce that by five feet. It's consistent with the front setbacks in Hampton Hall.
Yes.
Michael, I do have a question about the existing detention pond, right? It's already there. I didn't walk all the way back there to figure that.
There's, I'm, I'm not familiar with the existing.
Okay, so that, the blue on this showing right now, that is going to be to be developed?
Correct.
And the piping going in? Okay, because I thought I heard something about two fences along two sides of that. So, the plan is to fence two sides of that?
There's, the pond is partially walled. I mentioned that there are walls shown on the site plan on the pond on two sides because of the topography in the area. So, it's that, that area at the back of the property is sloping pretty significantly, so they'll need to build a wall on two sides of that pond. The other sides, I believe, are earthen, possibly.
Okay, so when you talk about the decorative, to make sure it's looking nice from the opposite side, that's the sides?
Yeah, so the walls will be facing out, so the walls will be facing south and west, and they'll be facing other properties. So, we have a condition in there that require the walls to be decorative.
Okay. I do have one other question on number 10, the markup number 10, it says the non-access easement behind lots three and four. I guess I just have never seen it, just, the buffer's larger on that side, so the non-access easement behind lots three and four, can you just explain where that is?
So, the reason for that condition is, we don't want someone to come back in the future and ask for an additional driveway, and additional curb cut to access the properties. So, what we're doing is, so these two lots that are adjacent to High Hampton Chase, they should be accessed from the new Coltsac Road within the development. They should not get a curb cut from High Hampton Chase. So, you would, they would show on their final plat a non-access easement along here, and that means that they cannot bring vehicular access across that. On lots three and four, that is right here, and the reason why we placed that is because Carverton Lane does come right up to the property, and so, we didn't want these properties to possibly request an additional access to those properties.
Thank you.
Yeah.
For that clarification.
I have a question, Michael. So, it says that the site plan depicts the stormwater pond discharging through a pipe. Is this pipe underground?
Yes.
Or it's visible, it's underground? And I guess there's some kind of study to determine if the stream can handle all this water that's going to be coming through?
Correct. That's, again, these, they're, a lot of the stormwater conditions relate to these last few phases that have been approved, at least Phase Seven, and this would be Phase Eight. There's a lot of topography on these properties. And obviously, it's a built environment, don't want to have impacts, unintended impacts to adjacent properties. So, that's why that condition was placed on it. This is a similar condition that was placed on, I know at least of Phase Seven.
Okay.
With respect to these stormwater conditions.
So, I guess I'm trying to, for those people that are here or watching online that are concerned about this, I want to give them some kind of reassurance of that we're doing everything we possibly can, right?
Yes. So, these stormwater conditions go over and beyond our, our stormwater code in an effort to make sure that there's no unintended impact, negative impacts to surrounding properties.
And then, I'm assuming the developer will continue to communicate with the Homeowners' Association, the look and the feel of the stormwater pond, and is that something that we do? Is that something they do, or?
You would, I would question the applicant about that. The applicant does have agreements with the Hampton Hall HOA. I don't know the extent of those agreements with regard to stormwater, but they are here this evening, and should be able to answer that question.
Okay, and then the other thing is, there's a lot of, seems like some of the homes have two-car garages, most of them, front-facing. Is that something that the Homeowners' Association agreed to? Because there's, I'm just asking.
So, I believe that a majority of the So I believe that a majority of the, of the homes do have front-facing garages here. This is, this is kind of in that eastern suburb of, or eastern side of Alpharetta, not in the downtown where we really do like that side or rear-loaded home. So we are okay with a front-facing garage. However, I do believe that there's someone here from Hampton Hall HOA as well as the applicant, and they should be able to address anything to do with the facing of the garage as well.
All right, thank you.
I just have one more, sorry. The last condition, where you talk about no more than 10% of the residential units, because of the age of the original development, will that condition just apply to this section? Because I'm wondering, just, just these homes?
They'll have covenants. I don't know the logistics of how those covenants will match with existing covenants in the greater Hampton Hall HOA, but they will have their covenants.
Okay, because I'm thinking they probably didn't have that in their original.
I don't know if they did offhand. It's possible that they, that they did have a 10%, but I'd have to check that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much, appreciate it, good job. All right, so now we'll hear from the applicant, and please don't forget to state your name, and I know you know your address. Thank you.
I'll try my best. Madam Acting Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, I'm Don Rolater. My address for office is 200 Foothills Parkway, Marble Hill, Georgia, 30148. I'm happy to be here tonight with Alex Tetterton, who's the CEO of Southvine Homes. The property, as Michael told, is about five acres. It's on the south side of High Hampton Chase, right across the street from Mr. Kyle Caswell's house. So we expect to visit with Kyle as we go through this. Everything around it's either zoned CUP or R-12, so this is a compatible zoning with those properties. Our intention is to build nine single-family homes on the site. We've agreed for everyone's benefit to substantially expand the external buffers around the property from 25 feet to 40 feet for the good of all concerned. That just makes it work, and in order to do that, we needed some small variances on internal setbacks and those kind of matters. We have reached complete agreement with the city as to those. They support the variances that make it functional for us to give this substantial 40-foot buffer on the outside. The overall intent is to create a new phase of Hampton Hall, nothing more than that. Hampton Hall's goal is to have us be homogeneous with the rest of the subdivision, so that is our goal and our intent. We've been in continuous contact with the Hampton Hall HOA. Two of their members are with us tonight, and we've reached an agreement regarding the development. The site plan reflects the terms of that agreement as approved by the Hampton Hall HOA. I think that vote was 125 to four, but we have the email from that approval. We've worked closely with the staff on the conditions. There's a little bit of red on here, but I don't think I'll have to go through it tonight like is my usual miserable job. All of these additions and deletions are agreed upon by us and the staff. If you have a particular one that you would like explained, it'll be our privilege to explain it to you, but these are all negotiated. I think the one important one that we didn't cover too heavily on the front presentation is that we won't be doing decorative pedestrian lighting as was originally stated. The Hampton Hall people have asked us to do the lighting exactly like what they have, and we have agreed to do that. So that one kind of stood out to me. In summary, we ask that you commend approval to the City Council of this rezoning from AG to R-15 with the conditions agreed to by the applicant and the staff, which is the redline version you have in front of you, and that you recommend approval of the requested variances which staff recommends. This development is in compliance with the comprehensive plan, it's in compliance with the future land use plan, and it has the full support of the staff. To help us a little further before we close, I'd like for Alex to address to you the way that he's dealing with stormwater on this site. I think you'll find it most enlightening, and at this time, let me turn it over to Alex.
Hello, my name's Alex Tetterton. I reside at 10500 Belladrum, Johns Creek, but our business office is here in Alpharetta. Commissioner Reynolds, those were great questions. If it's okay, I'll move over here and talk here. This is an old farm by trade, so it's got a few terraces coming here, and here is the boundering neighbors. They live in Waters Landing, and for years, this water has been coming down this way, okay? And so this pond that will be put here will collect most of this water. The second point of that is it will redirect this water from these landowners that comes down a hill down to their homes, and it will collect it here and then redirect it underground and dissipate into the creek. Your second question about the creek is all this water's flowing in this creek already, so we're not adding any more water to the creek. It's already coming down here, and it will meet proper drainage and proper dissipation into that creek, and it will be all underground as well. The other question that you did have about the garages, they're actually all three-car garages, and there's two on the side and one on the front. We call those carriage garages, so they will all have three-car garages.
That concludes our presentation. We're happy to answer any questions that you have before we open it for public comment, and we would reserve time for rebuttal if there is any comment that needs it. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, does anyone have any questions for the applicant? We will open it up for public comment. Do we have any cards for this one?
Yes, we do. We have Alkaram Thawer, I'm sorry if I mispronounced that.
You did.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll open it up for those in favor of this applicant, anybody?
I have one more card, I'm sorry, Drew Voorhees.
Those both are in favor?
They, they both, there's only two cards I have.
Okay, so anybody speaking in favor of this applicant? All right, seeing none, I'll close that, and we'll go to opposition. Anybody would like to speak in opposition? And when you get to the mic, just don't forget to state your name and your address, please.
So good evening, Chairperson and Commissioners. My name is Alkaram Thawer. I am a homeowner at 170 Starboard. I've been there since that development happened past 26 years. So I've been the, one of the only persons still there in that subdivision. So just to give you a background, about six years ago, there was a development that happened right behind my home, and I at that time had concerns. It was a chicken house, but then they built some homes, and my biggest concern was water will come from high land to low land, and I'm sitting at the lowest land from where Hampton Hall is, right? So just to give you a picture, this will work, yes. So I am right here where my finger, that's where I've been for the last 25 years, and this was a chicken home where they developed the chicken house. And after that, this was six years ago, I saw a lot of water coming my way. The volume of water was tremendous, right? So I reached to the city, saying, hey, what's going on? This is to do with this new development and everything, and I got about 30 pages of communications with the city. And basically, the answer that I got was water goes from high to low, which I know, that's basic, and there's nothing the city can do. Okay, so that was my concern, and I would just like to show a few pictures that says the intensity of water coming from Hampton Hall. This is right between my home here and my neighbor's home. That's one amount of water. And then you can see amount of water going all the way from Hampton Hall to the cul-de-sac. This is where everybody lives, okay? This is the amount of water that goes. This is the amount of water that will start coming, or is coming right where a new development will happen. And it is quite a bit, and I have significant amount of pictures which don't want to take a lot of time. This is another, and the last one, just, I just wanted to show you is, this is how much water is coming right now when it rains. And I have shared all these pictures with the city through six to seven years of my correspondence with the city, and everything's here. So why am I showing concern? I'm showing concern as a homeowner to say, if this development happens, there will be redistribution of soil, which is natural, and my anticipation is I'll see more significant water coming my way to 170 Starboard, and the concern that I'm bringing to the city is, and there's a lot of concerns, but the biggest concern is once this development is done and these beautiful nine homes come, and if more water comes, what are my options? I've already seen eight years ago, I had my concern, I requested the city, the city says, no, we're going to go ahead and do this development. More water came, and I've shown you the pictures. I communicated with the city. I did not get any help saying that we'll help you out. Now my concern is if this thing happens, can the city indemnify me to say, okay, in case the new developer does this and then later on moves away from the city, will the city indemnify me to say, we got your back, we'll handle any erosion, soil contamination or anything, we'll handle it and we'll put down whatever needs to be done to lower the concerns of the water coming to 170? That's all I have to say. Thank you so much for your time. If there are any questions, I'll take your questions.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
About one minute left unless you want to add additional time.
Okay. Who was the name of the other person? Drew?
Drew Voorhees.
Sorry. Don't forget to state your name and address, thank you.
Good evening. Drew Voorhees, 165 Starboard Way in Alpharetta, and I'm two doors down from that gentleman who just spoke. I'm also the president of the HOA at Waters Landing. Not necessarily in opposition, more of just making sure that the homeowner's questions and concerns are properly addressed. I see that water flow, those pictures, it's directly across the cul-de-sac. It runs all the way down the street, it brings mud, it brings debris, it all runs to our retention pond. I will say one thing in favor of the development, they've been completely transparent with us and communicating with us the entire time. My property lies where the sewer line easement goes through, the drainage from that pond, so have been really appreciative and thankful for the cooperation and communication. But as a HOA president, I am concerned about a neighbor that has had flooding from previous development, and would just like to make sure that there's not going to be additional water and additional flooding that would impact, anything extra will impact his property, and not only his property, a property to his left and his right. So that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? All right, we'll close public comment.
Do you want to hear a rebuttal?
Oh, absolutely, rebuttal.
Very briefly, and I apologize due to the late hour, the construction of the retention pond on our property should alleviate a great deal of the water that's presently running onto the subdivision below. We can only handle the water that comes across our subdivision, but we will do that, and it will take what's now going on the first gentleman's property that he showed you the pictures of, and it will divert it entirely, and it will take it to the southeast corner of this property through an enclosed pipe and put it in a creek that's there, which is where it belongs. So I would not mislead you and say, well, we'll solve 100% of his problems. That's not so. But the flow of sheet water that's coming off this property now will go away. It will be properly managed, and it's not something we're doing out of magnanimity, it's because the city of Alpharetta Stormwater Ordinances require us to do it. So that's our response. If we need to give you any further explanation of that, Mr. Tetterton's here, we'll be happy to do that. Other than that, that concludes our rebuttal.
Thank you very much. Any questions for them before they leave?
Just want to be clear, because we're having a discussion up here, and I'm familiar with Mr. Tetterton's product, but these pictures look like one-car garages, Mr. Rolater.
I understand that, I had the same thought.
And I'm thinking, that's why I asked, you're 30 feet off the road, you got a one-car garage, what are you going to, and you're going to build a 3,800-square-foot house?
The part of the house that juts out has two-sided entry garages. It dawned on me about 45 minutes after I looked at it the first time, but it's, that's what it is, it's three-car, and that's the way they work.
I appreciate it, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. All right, I'll open it up to the commissioners, and I do have a follow-up question for Mr. And just to be clear, you can leave the graphic that's up there. So the hydrology study has not been done yet, so the size and verifying that the runoff and everything is sized and piped accordingly and going in all the right directions will be confirmed once that study's done, and then at that point, staff will take another look at it and make sure that matches, okay?
Correct, as part of the land assurants permit process. That's when this, our stormwater ordinance will be enforced.
Okay, so there'll be another review to make sure everything is sized appropriately, and that will give some confidence to those, those people downhill.
Yes, and I'm happy to get a few members of the public that spoke, I'm happy to get them in touch with our stormwater engineer should they have any questions before this gets to City Council.
Great.
Michael, I've got one question. Can you just, for the public record, speak to the code requirement that, for development, developers such as this, that their development cannot create, and I'll give the layperson's definition, but cannot create water flow in excess of what already exists? Just so we're clear on that.
See, yeah, so the development of this property, the developer will have to, cannot increase the rate of flow off this property with this, with the proposed development. So they, they cannot increase the rate of flow of water off this property that is there today with this proposed development.
And so it's safe to assume that the, the direction that the developer's gotten from the stormwater engineer at the city is focused on that end game, right? Not to increase water flow beyond what exists today? Is that correct?
Certainly, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Woodman? No, thank you. I'll turn it over to the commissioners for discussion.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion if that's okay?
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve, Z-24-16 slash V-24-25, Hampton Hall Southvine Homes, as per the conditions read by Mr. Woodman, with the applicant's markups overlaid on top of those conditions.
Second, understood that, right, but second.
Yes. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, I'll call the motion. Please raise your right hand so I can see it. All those in favor, five yeses. Thank you. All right, thank you very much for your public comment. Again, that'll be heard, City Council, December 16th. Thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we have, I believe, one more item on the agenda. We'll do PH-24-24 Unified Development Code text amendments, recreation facilities indoor and historic preservation incentive flag lots and procedures. Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Chairman. The next item is a staff recommendation to amend the Unified Development Code subsection 2.2.1.
2.2.14, Neighborhood Commercial Conditional Uses in Table 2.2, in order to add recreation facilities indoor as a conditional use in the C1 zoning district. And the reason we're doing this is, it's already allowed within the C2 zoning district. We thought that this should be used allowable on C1. There's a lot of shopping centers along North and South Main Street that are C1. We've had requests over the last year to put, like, indoor kids, party, retailers, and some of those different indoor recreation facilities. So we thought that it should be something that they could request a conditional use, not allowed by right in C1, but conditional, conditional use. Also recommending changes to UDC subsection 2.3.1, general exemptions, flag lots, incentives available to historic properties. So we're looking to change the Unified Development Code in order to make it something that council could approve if they thought that it warranted approval for a flag lot if you have a historic property. So currently, our code prohibits a flag lot, but what we're seeing is some of the historic properties that we have, don't have a lot of those, but some of them, the lots are configured to where they're more linear instead of having a lot of street frontage. So it may be something in some cases that they could come forward and get approval for a flag lot. And of course, a public hearing would require that the public's notified and the public speaks, and it would have to make sense that it matches adjacent properties. We also have another change where we, and these are just really cleanup. It's amend, amending UDC Article 4, procedures related to fees associated with the public hearing process. We're just changing that because if we, if the fees change and the amount that the, the newspapers are charging us, that it's not a set fee, that it's just left open. We also had for a long time within the Unified Development Code that you have to report a political contribution of $100, although our application says $250. So we're just matching that up, changing the 100 to 250. So these are just cleanup items. We also removed the list of requirements for a development of regional impact. So if you remember, there's certain criteria that a project would have to go through, and that's a state program, the development of regional impact. So we had listed, these are the requirements to go through the program. However, they change their program requirements probably every couple of years, so we just left it blank so that people have to check what those requirements are. So mostly cleanup, but I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
All right. Thank you very much. I will turn it over for any questions for Mrs. Cook.
Kathy, are there, are there any specific lots that you're thinking of that would apply to the flag lot?
There's one that we, there's one we looked at on Canton Street that we believe would work for a flag lot, because a lot of times, especially on Canton Street, when, when the road is widened and it gets closer to that historic house, but the lot is a, has a lot of depth to it, so it is something that could be requested. So that, that was one of them that we looked at. We looked at a few of them. It's not something we're going to go advertise, but we do believe that it's something that should be added to the list of incentives if you're saving a historic structure for consideration.
Just a comment. I drive along Upper Henry Road near Crab Apple Road, and there's a gigantic house behind a, medium-sized house, but it's on a flag lot. Looks really stupid, really bad. So I'm glad that the city does not allow that and any other conditions.
Yeah. And that's why, you know, we prohibit it. And even, you know, allowing it as a possible incentive, it's not a given. So we have to make sure that, you know, the structures would not be exactly what you're talking about, where it's taller than the one in front, or, yeah.
I did have one quick question, because I didn't look it up today. So we talk about the advertising fees, and I'm assuming those rates are very accessible on your website as far as if you're going to do it, the fees? Yeah.
Yes. We list the fees, but if those go up, we want to make sure that we can raise ours.
No, sounds good. Any other questions? All right. Turn it over to the Commissioners.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve PH-24-24 Unified Development Code text amendments, recreation facilities indoor historic preservation incentive, flag lots, and procedures, as noted by staff.
I'll second. Thank you very much. Hearing no other discussion, I'll go ahead and call the vote. Please raise your right hand. Five yeses. All right. Any other business from the Commissioners? We will see you in January. Thank you very much.